Start the meeting. Let's start the meeting, the committee of the whole meeting for uh July twenty third. I'll start by uh reading the land acknowledgement. The town of Hinton, oh, I can read it here. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges as Sulkata and the first people's traditional lands. Recognize this traditional territory, show respect and understanding that we've walked the signs since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our onward responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the first peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands and for generations to come. I call the meeting to order. Now, uh we're on to adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda, administration or council?
There's nothing for administration.
Okay, in that case, uh we need a motion to adopt the agenda. The mayor, Nissan, thank you.
Do you go move that we adopt the agenda as presented?
Uh, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we vote for or against. We got one more person to vote.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay, the mayor votes by hand. Then do we have any citizens uh for our mental council?
No, there is not.
Okay. Uh, now we're to uh reports from administration. If he has presentations and we're on the utility here. Well, before we do that, is there a new person to uh introduce? Uh, I'll do that after the utility is.
Pass this along to Mr. McGaw.
Well, th- thank you, uh council for having us in today to talk about this important issue that I know you. Uh, has been a long time coming. I will introduce Victoria Zhang. She uh works in our department. And she has helped me quite a bit uh through this process as we've prepared all these reports uh for you today. We have uh broken down the topic of utility rates today into three separate uh topics. So that we can get three separate uh directions from committee. Uh, so some of my uh talk at the beginning will apply to all three of them. Uh, I wanted to start with a little bit of background on the water and sewer services uh in the town of Hinton. Uh, we've been very fortunate since the nineteen fifties to be a partner with the pulp mill here in town. Which has supplied us with both water and and sewer and has kept our uh costs historically low for the history of the town. Uh, in twenty fifteen, we entered into uh new agreements with West Fraser at the time. And that led to us in twenty eighteen taking over uh running the water treatment plant. Uh, within the pulp mill and uh making our own potable water and supplying it to the town. But inside of their pulp mill. Uh, with that agreement, we were supposed to save up and either take over the complete. Treatment process, including the pre-treated water that both the pulp mill and we use. Or we were to construct a new water treatment plant. Uh, that didn't happen and we were getting into a pretty precarious situation. When along came Mondi and purchased the mill uh this year. And that allowed us to renegotiate agreements for water and wastewater and has given us security for those. Uh, systems moving forward. However, in order to uh live up to those agreements, we are going to have to increase uh utility rates in the town. And tonight's presentation is intended to start the conversation both with committee and with the community. Uh, one of the biggest things in these agreements is that we need to build a new water treatment plant by twenty forty six. That seems like a long time away, but given the cost of a water treatment plant, uh we need to start saving today in order to be able to do that. Uh, there's also some immediate upgrades that'll be done on the water side, which will give us some uh water security. Uh, and then on the sewer side, we're also going to be uh doing many improvements. So that the uh sewer that is treated is treated properly before it goes back into the Athabasca River. Uh, all of those costs uh have been combined compiled. We sent around a spreadsheet to council so that they can play with themselves on. Uh, how to, how to set the rates to generate the uh, the revenue we need in order to. Uh, meet these commitments. Uh, for, for example, all the bills are generally made up of a flat rate plus a consumption rate. And uh, you can make the flat rate higher and the consumption rate lower and get the same dollars. Or you can uh create the uh flat rate lower in the consumption or the other way around. You can, you can adjust them back and forth and to, to generate the amount of money we, we need in order to uh meet our commitments. Uh, we've included uh some comparisons with the other municipalities. And it's quite evident that we are going from the low side to the high side. Uh, I think that that is typical in that what happens with these water costs is a pre- you. You tend to live off your historic costs and not upgrade and not up people's bills. Uh, before you need to, and so I take, think all municipalities. Uh, suffer from when a big upgrade comes, they're hit with a large cost like we're being hit with today. And the utility rates tend to jump. Uh, as opposed to in small incremental increases uh over time. And uh, this report also talks about uh residential deposits. Uh, previously, when we had just a uh flat rate if council chooses. Uh, later on in the further topic to uh do meters, then we definitely have to look at how the method which. We uh charge for deposits, but that's a smaller issue. Uh, and again, another small issue is bulk water. Uh, we do now have the credit card. Uh, reader up and running at the uh bulk water station. Uh, but we need to look at the water rate that or the, what we charge for water rates coming out of our bulk water station. As part of the overall utility review. And the last piece is. How, when, how are we gonna go about this decision and talking to the public? So, in this report, we have outlined a communications plan and it is. Uh, administration's intention that council will go through these topics today. They will give us direction for how they're feeling right now. And then we will go to the public, uh following a communications plan. And we will get uh the public input on this issue uh well into September. And while that is happening, we will start actually drafting the bylaws that are necessary to put these rates into place. And then we will bring those bylaws back to committee for, for a first look at. And that's when council will have the uh opportunity to adjust anything after hearing from the public. So when the bylaws come back to you, you will also have uh summaries of what we heard uh from the public. And at that point, you'll give us further direction on the bylaws. Then they will come to you to regular council where we will do a first reading. And then they will come back to regular council again where there will be uh the public hearings. And then you will eventually pass the bylaws. So this is the very start of a long process and the public uh input that we get is very important. Uh, and so following this meeting, it is our intention to uh add a distinct web. Web page to our website uh on this issue. Where, you know, as, as we work through this issue with the community, we'll continue to add updated information and updated questions. Uh, to the public as we go through it. Uh, we've already prepared a FAQ that will go on to that website and it's included as an attachment to this report. Um, so if council wants to uh uh suggest any other questions that we should be answering as we put that up to the website. We're also interested to hearing those suggestions from you tonight. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So a question I do have is um regarding the administration fees for water and sewer. So water is thirty dollars per, per household, sewer is ten. So if I kind of take an average of four thousand households in Hinton at thirty dollars a month. That's about one point four million a year. And then with the sewer, so is that money going into general revenue? Is it going into a water account? What were you gonna do with that?
Admin. So no matter how you set the rates, you can either, you know, our rates do need to increase to cover. Uh, the new agreements that we have signed with Mondi. But whether you're increasing the admin fee or increasing uh the consumption side of the bill. Uh, it all goes to the same place. What um, what's important is that. We generate enough revenue to cover our operating costs and all the costs of the capital coming forward. So all the money collected on the water side, whether it's in the admin fee or a consumption fee, will all go into the same ledger account. Uh, and pay for operating and get set aside for the capital costs as the projects are. Uh, as they come up. And the same on the sewer side, all the money collected from the sewer admin fee and the consumption fees. All go into the same pot of money and. So if you set a admin fee higher, you're spreading the cost amongst all the users, no matter how much water they use. If you set a consumption fee higher, you're making those that use more water pay more. And so you're looking as a council to set a balance. How much of the, how much of the overall expense do you want as a flat rate? And how much of the overall expense do you want where the, those who use more water pay more? Uh, which is on your consumption side of the, the, the expense, the cost per cubic meter. Uh, so really, we, you're looking to create a, a balance in the, in the fees. And we've provided a spreadsheet where uh you could play with those to try increasing one versus the other. Uh, to try and find that happy medium of what you as a council would be comfortable with.
Go ahead.
So when you say operating costs, the operating costs are on the panel or a different operating costs?
Okay, so we have uh lots of different operating costs on the water side. Um, we now have to pay uh Mondi a proportional share of their expenses for running the pre-treatment stuff. So we are seeing a increase of about two hundred and nine thousand dollars a year, more than what we were paying traditionally. Um, our current costs uh on the water side are about four million dollars a year in rough numbers. And a lot of that is going to running the plant with Aqua Terra, uh chemicals in the plant, all our utility costs. Um, there is some costs in there for doing uh contracted repairs to our water, our water lines. Uh, sewer flushing, uh or sorry, uh hydrant flushing, not sewer, but hydrant flushing on the water side. And the same goes for sewer. There's lots of costs to run our systems and. Currently, our sewer revenue is about one point one million. And on the operating side, we're anticipating the new Mondi agreement to be of, an increase of three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. Uh, in the operating.
Good, thank you.
My first suggestion for another FAQ would be uh describe what the uh, the water admin fee and the sewer admin fee is more precisely. It's not, it's only vaguely described as a water admin fee spreads costs equally amongst all the utility accounts. So I think, otherwise people just think it's a, you know, if you describe it like you just just said. I think that would be a good thing to describe as an FAQ. Okay, any more questions?
I'd like to do it through the chair of administration. I'd like to follow up on that with the, the titles of the admin fees. I think are confusing titles to begin with. It's a fixed cost, it's a variable cost. Uh, that's how we're obviously viewing it. I've heard some feedback from. Uh, I think we all got email from, from residents of the community asking about the admin fee. And typically these days, admin fees are strictly the admin fees that get tagged on for like paying extra. Or you know, extra for paying with Visa or something additional in, in the, is the common vernacular. So maybe we could rename those, those fixed fees uh in the process, but I'm super curious to see what comes out of our public consultation. And the uh, that process and what feedback we get when the, the bylaw actually comes to us. Thank you. Uh, through the chair of administration, what is the amount of the current recycling fee that we're charging? That is going to be coming off when the new ERP comes into play?
Uh, through the chair to all committee, the, the, the answer is, is at budget time. Uh, council discussed a ten dollar and eighteen cents uh fee, but that has not been introduced yet. So currently there is not a reci- uh, a recycle fee, but the plan was to uh put it to ten dollars and eighteen cents. It was, uh, the, the plan was the lower waste, add recycling with an overall. In, with an overall slight increase, uh but we haven't made those changes uh yet.
Okay, thank you.
My question would be uh. If we metered a hundred percent, what would the rate be and what would that be composed of? It says it would be a hundred and forty nine, but that's like making the assumption that fifty percent is gonna be metered. But if a hundred percent was metered, what would the meter grade be? Now, well.
Uh, through, through the chair, um, we would, I would have to actually go to that spreadsheet and, and do that. And I can, you uh, you, you can actually type in a hundred percent. And then what you have to do when you make one of those changes in that spreadsheet is then look to see how your estimated total yearly cost. Comes in compared to the revenue required to produce. And uh, if making that change, uh. Changes the revenue substantially, then you have to adjust your rates until, until such time that you have them roughly. Uh, so I haven't, I would have to do that. Would you like me to do that as we speak?
Yeah, cause I think that's one of the likely outcomes. Nobody minds.
So your, your question is if we, if we ran, had a hundred percent meter install?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, um, so one scenario that I came up with, if, if your uh. Your flat rates continue to be thirty dollars for water and ten dollars for sewer. And you kept both commercial rates and residential's rates the same. Uh, then you're, and you made water consumption rate three dollars and fifty cents. And you made your sewer consumption rate two dollars and seventy five cents. Uh, you would generate the income required.
I'd like to take the recommended action, the committee reached consensus for administration to draft new utility bylaws, including the following rates. And to bring back to a future committee of the whole meeting. Water admin fee thirty dollars, sewer admin fee ten dollars, water consumption rate three twenty five, unmet water consumption rate. Twenty five meter cube by three twenty five equals eighty one twenty five, sewer consumption rate two twenty five. Unmetered sewer consumption rate twenty five meter cube at two twenty five equals fifty six twenty five. Bulk water consumption rate six dollars and residential refundable service charge deposit equal to a hundred and fifty dollars. If I may speak to it, please. Yeah. Uh, I think that this is an important first step in moving this discussion forward. Uh, from administration, the next step is they're going to be drafting this and going out and seeking public feedback. In consultation along with a robust communications plan. I'd like to get them started on that. And I'm interested to see what the community feedback is on these rates uh as we go forward. Knowing that we have a number of times that this is coming to council or committee before we actually make any final decisions.
Thank you.
I can speak to that. I support that because I find the assumptions here uh basically a good reasonable starting point. And we are going to get input and we can change it based on that input. So I think you've done a good job of making some pretty reasonable assumptions as far as I'm concerned. And uh, the other assumption I like that you made here is that uh when it comes time to actually pay for this thing in the future. Um, uh twenty four, twenty five million dollars are gonna be borrowed and that puts the costs onto the generation that's actually gonna use it. So me, I'm, I'm gonna be dead before that happens, but the generation that's gonna use it is gonna have to pay for it in the future. Any other comments? Okay, is that um, no more comments? Uh, could we vote uh for or against that, please? Okay, with that, that passes unanimously. Uh, thank you very much. No more comments on that? We move to the frequency of billing discussion. Thank you.
Alright, uh, so this is the uh second direction request in relation to utilities that we were, wanted council to review tonight. Uh, currently, the town does bimonthly billing, which is a little abnormal when comparing to other municipalities. And that has some history to it. Uh, at one time, we billed the hill one month. And the valley the other month to split administration costs. Um, or administrative work. Uh, we no longer need, need to do that. Um, and so we feel that we should be moving to monthly billing. Uh, and as a side to that, we're trying to get people to move to digital billing. Because it does save a lot of folding and stuffing envelopes. Um, which is very labor intensive still. Uh, our current cost to mail out our post- postage is ninety eight cents uh per bill. And, and that does increase over time, as well as there's a lot, lots of labor and, and in folding and stuffing the envelopes. Uh, so we'd like the council to consider moving to monthly billing. And also when the fees uh come forward, uh consider an additional fee of two dollars a month. For those who still want to receive paper bills. Uh. Yeah, and without, take any questions.
I can speak to it. Um, I, I support moving to monthly billing. That makes sense with this sale of increase. But I don't support an additional two dollars per month for paper bills. To me, that's just an annoying extra charge. And there's a portion of the population that doesn't have computers, so electronic billing is a problem. So that's my take on it. Um, comments or questions? Or motion? Chris, please.
Um, I, I certainly support this, this motion. Um, I think it makes sense. It's a lot easier to break it. We've had conversations prior, um, in our strategic planning about, you know, not, not doing such a big lump, lump sum changes uh going into the monthly school. I, I do support the additional fee of two dollars. It, it is annoying, but I think that's the point. Um, I think that, you know, it, it's kind of the way of the world and it is a really labor intensive, um. A process and I mean, just the, the stamps and everything else. If people choose that option, I think that. Um, that's something that, that would be carried. Um, so yeah, I, I do support and I, I would make the motion. Um, that committee would reach consensus for administration to draft updated utility bylaws with monthly billing. Including an additional fee of two dollars per month for paper bills.
I will speak in support of this. I uh, I tend to agree that monthly billing makes sense where we're headed with our addition or with our fees. And I also support the additional two dollars for paper bills. Way of the world. Thank you.
Thanks. Any more comments or questions? The, we'll vote. Please vote for or against. Okay, it's unanimous, it passed. Now we move on to uh water meter implementation, please.
Alright, uh, this is the, the third one and an important topic. Uh, currently. Uh, the residential uh houses and multifamily dwellings in the town of Hinton do not have water meters. And with addressing the utility rates, uh, we're looking for council's direction on. Uh, what they feel we should do with water meters. The uh, uh, we think that there is uh three potential directions that the council could go with this item. Uh, one is voluntary uh installa- installation where those that want a water meter could get one. And pay the rate accordingly. Uh, this, the second one is uh mandatory where everyone is forced. To have a meter in their house and everyone's on a uh water and sewer uh consumption, consumption rates. Or the last one is that's cool and, and uh not doing meters at all. Uh, each one of those comes with their uh, their own hurdles and subsequent questions. Um, which I would uh attempt to answer uh as we go through this discussion. Um. Oh, I, I wanna add one more thing. The last word, the, the last thing that we want to discuss is something that. Uh, Hinton does very uniquely is we allow uh our multifamily residential buildings to do, to do something called vacancy reports. Um, we're looking for council's support of not doing that, uh, moving forward. When the, when the new bylaws come forward. Thank you.
Comments or questions?
Well, my question would be, if we go for water metering. What are the, what are the costs of public if they pay once, if they get it added on to the bill? How much would that cost for how long?
Uh, through the chair to all committee, so that is getting in, into the details that I, I wanted to get into. If we choose a voluntary option, we have to decide how do we do that? Do we allow each uh homeowner to purchase a meter through the town? And have their own plumber install it and they bear the cost of getting the meter installed? That is one way we could do it. A second way we could do it is we could take names and uh through. Our, our purchasing, work with the manufacturer to do all the metered installs as one big project. It would likely bring the, the cost down and then we could put that cost as an additional charge on, on the bill itself. Um, the meters have an internal battery that is not replaceable and they ju- and they last twenty years. Uh, one of the suppliers that we have talked to is willing to provide a. It are as willing to provide the meters at a monthly rate and they will guarantee uptime that if. Any meter is not operational, we won't get charged for that meter. And, and they're willing to provide that guarantee for the full twenty years and we pay them monthly for the twenty year uh. And we pay them monthly for the twenty year uh period. So. Doing it as a project and having it as a monthly cost on the bill is a second option. Um, and then you could do sub options. The town could pay for it, but still do it as a. Meter one by one and hiring plumbers to put them in, or you can do it as a big project. Uh, those are, that is some direction we need is. Is how do we do the implementation? Um, if it is a voluntary that is selected.
Well, please. Um, so just for, I guess, um. For this evening, you're looking for consensus moving forward. I'm assuming we'd have a report then to come back if we were to choose voluntary different options. Uh, cost wise and stuff to have a better understanding, better picture for the citizens. You know, if they were to do voluntary, maybe even have a conversation, it it maybe. But some sort of incentive by the town to to opt into the voluntary. Options possibly or something like that, like is that going to be a secondary report to come to us with more information on that?
Um, through the chair to all council, wh- what we're recommending is that we, uh, you know. Ultimately, the easiest thing for administration is a mandatory. Installation and do every single house and know where all our water is being used. Um, from an administration side, that is uh the best option. But knowing the community and uh know, you know, having heard uh from people over the years on this issue. I think the most palatable uh solution is the voluntary uh meter, which is why that, which is why we're putting that forward. And with that, we think that the best thing to do. Administration wise would be to take the names, make it as a monthly charge and do it as a big project and get a lot done quickly. Um, so that is what the recommended action is. Um, but if council wanted to go a different direction on that, we could bring back more information and. And and flesh out those options.
So to follow up. I hear that. I guess my my. What I'm wondering is whichever we pick, which I realize mandatory would be administratively easier, absolutely. But there still would be, how do we implement it? How do we do it on on their monthly bills, a certain percentage or whatever? So I guess that's where I'm at is is whether it's voluntary, whether it's mandatory, we will hear back from administration on. You know, how we implement it and what those costs are going to look like, how we're going to roll that out. So the citizens have an understanding, realize, you know, for the eximony time, my bills are going to be more. Till I pay off whatever the cost of the water meter, whatever. Is that fair to say?
Um, the cost we got from one supplier uh was that it would be ten dollars a month for the full twenty years. And then at the end of the twenty years, you actually have to change out the meters. And and so the cost is never going to go away if you do it monthly. The other way to do it is. You know, have the homeowner pay the entire shot, which would be close to a thousand dollars and. Then they, you wouldn't have it on your bill, but at the end of twenty years, they still got to buy a new one. Um, or the town's on the hook to buy a new one. They, you know, either way, it's in the cost of their water. What you you know, if if we're paying for it, they're paying for it. Uh, it it's worked into the costs no matter what we did.
That ten dollars a month, is it, was that an installed cost?
Yes.
Kristen?
Thank you through the chair to administration. So I know when we had talked about this a little bit before, we were talking about the impact obviously to. Some of the the lower to moderate income families, um. And how they could potentially greatly benefit from being in a metered um situation. Was there any look at? Is is that still something that's being considered, I guess, is is how to look at, would there be a program for? Um, you know, some potential, whether that's subsidies or concessions or something being made for people fitting this certain criteria.
Through the chair to all committee, we have not looked at any different rate structures based on income or or other needs. Uh, you know, those are scenarios that we could look at. I I mean, if council wants to do that, you would have to tell us their criteria and how we're going to verify those things. Um, knowing that you're you're shifting the cost from one user to another.
I think, if I may just follow up, I think where my head's going a little bit more is. Not on the different rate structure for the individuals necessarily, but potential help on on getting the meter. Completed and installed, something to that effect, so that they were able to, you know, reduce their usage, which would potentially reduce their bill, right? Something to that effect, but it was briefly brought up, but I just didn't know if it ever kind of hit the radar for this conversation.
Uh, through the chair to council chambers, um, I think that's what the monthly uh. Water meter charge was doing is is so it would be ten dollars a month. Instead of having to come up with a thousand dollars and and paying for the meter. Um, I think that by asking the supplier and getting this uh quote to uh. To do it by the month, that was our way of of doing just that, so people didn't have to say about for it. And and even with the additional ten dollar charge, uh, if you're allowing some people to go unmetered. Uh, it is envisioned that the meter costs would be less right from day one. Than non-metered. So we would we would encourage those individuals that. You know, care about dollar and cents, get it, go the meter route and then watch your usage.
No, I appreciate that clarity. Thank you. That helps.
Um, I have my name down next.
No, I did.
Um, I kind of, I'm not saying I made my mind up, but I'm kind of favoring the mandatory route. And the reason for that is I think one of the purposes of this is to uh get a system that fairly distributes the use. And we just have voluntary and the rest of the people mandatory. I think what'll happen is that people that are very careful with the water will jump out the. Jump out the uh, you know, they're getting my meter right away and the people that use a ton of it will wait till later. So, and that doesn't seem to fit the purpose, so. At least going right out the gate with a mandatory uh. Mandatory for the water meter seems to fit the purpose of why we're doing this a little better than the voluntary rate.
Through through the chair to all committee, um. I agree with what you're saying. Uh, however, how we've uh worked that into the numbers. Is what we're suggesting is anyone that chooses to remain unmetered will be charged consumption rate at twenty five cubes a month. Which is on the high side. It's considered excessive. Uh, a normal house in Alberta, our research shows is about fifteen cubes per month average over the year. Where you'd be slightly slightly higher in the uh in the summer months and 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 lower in the winter months. And so the the difference between fifteen cubes and twenty five cubes is a lot of water. And so anyone who is would be choosing, if you if you charge twenty five cubes as your unmetored consumption. Uh, it's taking into account that that is very high water users. Uh. But I I agree with your comment that the, you know, the fairest way to spread. It is to for everyone to pay their actual usage.
But not not just the fairest way, but the most efficient way to get the water utilized as well. It's gonna be pay a little more and get more water and no, no, no encouragement to reduce. Joanne, you're next.
So I gotta break this down a little bit. Thank you, sir. If we were mandatory, the. The town would uh pay upfront. Getting the money from somewhere and then people would have the option to pay ten dollars a month. For the next twenty years, or I could just give you a thousand dollars and pay it off and it wouldn't show up in my bill.
Uh, through the chair all committee, I I would, as administration, we wouldn't want to be. Or we would want council to choose how we're going to deliver this project. We either. You know, the town is managing it, people phone in, they get a meter, they see it, they see the charge on their bill. That's that's one way. The other way is they buy meters from us and they hire a plumber, they get them installed. That's the other way. It'd be administration's choice that we don't do both. Uh, that would get complex and uh difficult to manage.
So if we want mandatory. And the town has uh is going to pay for all these meters. Then every every uh household or whoever has meters will be charged that ten dollars every month on the day.
Yeah, and whether you choose to show them that cost or not is up again up to council, but you know. Every dollar we spend is being paid for by the residents through these utility bills. And and so if we decide to put meters in all their houses in Hinton. That cost will be in the capital cost and that cost needs to get paid for. And that works its way into the utility bill. Um, so whether you show it as an additional charge or not. The cost is there and it's being paid for by the utility base.
And our citizens would only be paying that ten dollars a month. They got a meter and they're just paying ten dollars. They're not taking a thousand dollars out of the bank and giving it to you. It's ten bucks.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Um, who's next, right?
Yeah, it was me. I'll I'll pick myself.
Uh, um, Nivea, please.
I see, see what class I kept on the side. No, I'm okay. Well, I'm. I'm leaning. Towards eventually being mandatory. I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm curious about what your implementation strategy is. We have a lot of data in infrastructure in town and. I could see getting a hundred percent uptake in a rapid turnaround being impossible. Um, a strategy where we, you know, maybe had people approach the town and voluntarily uptake early on. And did a did a couple of intakes, building up to mandatory might might be something that would work out. But what is administration's feel for implementation? If we were to do mandatory, we we want every house in business in Hinton that water meter at some point. How would we go about doing that in a way that's going to work?
Uh, through through the chair to all committee, uh. These meter supplying companies have taken this on for other communities and they're quite prepared to to do that um in the. Uh, in the company that provided us that quote for uh just under ten dollars a month. Charge there, we're willing to take on the entire town. Um, we have a number of. Uh, CCs in town that are inoperable or have problems. Um, they even included in their quote a small extra charge to do line freezing to get the meter installed. Where those are uh where the CCs are a problem, so we wouldn't have to take on uh a large capital project of. Fixing all the CCs in order to get this project done. Um. So I I I think the, you know, taking this on as a project. Uh, the the difficulty would be. Forcing the few that don't want them to get them. That would be the the most difficult part of the project. I think the the actual. Uh, rolling out of the meters and doing the installs, although it takes some time, is a manageable project.
If I could follow up. Yeah, it's the uh, the getting the few straggers on that that do, or maybe vehemently opposed. Uh, that I see as as being potentially a problem. Potentially, that's something we could mitigate with, again, a rollout strategy that included a voluntary period. And maybe even escalating fixed charges. Uh, as that period goes on, so we do, say we get an intake in the first year, do it over three, three to five years, say. Intake the first year. Intake the second year with an escalating fixed charge. You intake the third year and then by the fifth year, we were charging everyone a hundred cubes. It's not on a meter maybe. Is if you're not on a meter at that point, why? Maybe you're a big user. Maybe you just want to pay more, I don't know, but uh, would would something like that be reasonable? From administration standpoint, or would that be excess compensation?
Through the chair of committee, that's a really difficult question to have a crystal ball on. Uh, so I I'm not sure that I have a really good answer. I I I just know that. Uh, if council chose the mandatory option, other communities have done it and we'd work our way through it like they did. Ha- we we haven't done it ourselves, but we would tap into those communities and find out how they solve those problems and work with it.
Um, to you.
Thank you, Chair, to the rest of council. One of the things is we are going to go on to public consultation. And I think the implementation and how we go about things is going to be an important piece of that public consultation because. We know that eventually, before we build a water treatment plant, we do need to go on to water. Our water consumption is twice the average across Alberta. If we do want to get grants to size a water treatment plant, which could be a hundred million, eighty to a hundred million dollar asset. We do need eventually to go on water meters to be able to be competitive for funding. But I think that as long as we have the high level direction from council of whether it's voluntary or mandatory. A lot of the details of how and, you know, maybe identifying the the different options for the public consultation and bringing that back. And this is what we heard in the community is. We'll say most comfortable with this type of plan on implementing water meters. That could be something that. That we do for that public consultation process.
Whoever, you next.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. So just a quick question about that company that you've been discussing. Um. My thought and assumption is the mandatory for them is more reasonable. Are they e- are they even willing to? To entertain a voluntary residential program or voluntary system to start off? Uh, because I'm just thinking as a company, they'd rather come in and do all of them rather than doing pockets, uh, you know, here, there and. You know, for their their bank for the buck too. So is that, are they willing to do that? Or would that then make more on us to do them? Or the or the homeowner getting their own plumber or whatever, through through the chair of the committee. Um.
They're certainly prepared to come and and they knew we were looking at the the possibility of voluntary auction. Uh, I think they would come and come and do at least two large projects, the early adopters and a big second batch. Um, so you you they would come probably two years in a row for sure. And then after that, I think it would depend on just how many there are. If if you're getting down to, you 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 know, twenty or twenty or twenty or less. You're probably better to just buy the meters and uh hire them installer. Um, but as long as you have big volumes, I think they'd be willing to come.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. You would. I'd like to see the committee reach consensus for administration to draft the utility bylaw. That implements a mandatory residential water meter strategy with meters paid or with a meter fee, a mandatory meter uh vault. Uh, for trailer cords or similar properties and the elimination of the vacancy workforce. And if I can speak to it.
Yeah, you know, I've been mulling over my head between the voluntary and the mandatory and I I think that. The voluntary is just going to roll out, I think, quite slowly. It's going to take a lot of. Um. To understand the benefits, because I understand the benefits and I believe that there will be a saving of money. Versus a flat rate uh out there in the community, but for residents to see that and to opt into it. You know, and and the fact that I've heard the administration say that this isn't, we aren't the first town with the mandatory. Uh, water is a precious uh uh utility. Uh, we need to be mindful of it and I think some accountability. Uh, to the use of water is really important. I realize that some of this may add. Potentially, uh, if there are leaks in your house and things like that are going to be found, that then the residents will then have to be. Uh, they have to be um accountable for that uh to take care of those. But I just think a mandatory rollout is the best way. I think the ten dollars a month. Um, we do with our cell phones, we do a lot of different things, you know, and I think this is just another thing for households. Uh, to actually possibly save you money on your monthly utility bills, at least for your water consumption, so. Um, that's where I'm at with this one. Thank you.
Joanne?
Thank you, sir. Um, I I will support this, but I do have to say. I I don't know if we have a water strategy plan in Hinton. Um. I I I don't know if we we do, I can't find one, but. I feel that we, um, you know, when we go looking for grant money to assist us with our water needs. And we're filling out the forms and we say, we're one of the only municipalities in Alberta who are not metered. That speaks volumes. And we're filling out the forms and we say we're one of the only municipalities in Alberta who are not metered, that speaks volumes. So by having a you know, long meters throughout our community, that says that we're we're serious here. About regarding our own water strategy. Uh a question I have, can people challenge? This, say, you cannot make me get a meter. I had someone say they were challenged this.
Uh through the Chair to all committee, we'd have to uh research what our legal tools would be. Um hopefully, we can uh reach most people through. Uh education and 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 realizing why we need to do this and and the value of it. I think that we can get most people on side that way. Um but we would, I I don't have an answer for you, but we would have to. Uh work with our legal team to know exactly what tools we would have to force somebody.
I also wanted to ask about the bleeder cost for people who do have bleeders and need to run them during the winter. Is is that a pretty hefty cost? Or what if?
Uh through the through the Chair of all committee, so yes, and that that is a that is a cost. Um and it it's a real cost, whether it's on us or on them. Um and so we have addressed that in the FAQ question. And what we've said is it depends on why the bleeder's there. If the bleeder is there to protect the water main. And and to protect the town's side of the infrastructure, then the residents shouldn't pay for that. Uh but if the meat bleeder is there because their own personal water line on their property. Or uh or they don't have proper insulation uh under a skirted area or something like that and the bleeder's on. To protect their side of the infrastructure, then they should be paying that cost. Because they have the option of improving their infrastructure, just like we do, to not have that cost.
So one quick thing. So uh would you be helping the how the homeowner determine who bears that cost?
Yes, we we would make that determination. Um most of the bleeders have a history. And generally, if there's a bleeder, it's because something froze up at some point in time and we would. Determine where those freeze ups are occurring and that determines whether or not it should be our bill or their bill.
Any more um comments or questions for anybody? Okay, that um we're gonna vote on um the motion that uh. We reached consensus for administration to draft utility bylaws to implement a mandatory residential meter strategy. With mirrors paid for with a mirror fee, mandatory meter. Vault for trailer cords or similar properties and elimination of the vacancy report. Please vote for or against. Thank you. That causes unanimously. Thank you. Any final comments or questions on that?
Yes. Thank you. Um what so with this, what is administrations then? Uh plans for public feedback and and we have to go to a bylaw engine, you know, all all those. Public procedure with that, so what how does that look in the coming months or weeks?
Okay, through the uh through the Chair to all committee, what we're currently looking at doing is. It with the communications plan, uh we're hoping that the website will go up right away, hopefully by the end of the month, end of the week. Um we will prepare a media release telling people that that uh information is available on the website when. Uh once it is up, so that those two steps will happen right away. Uh the FAQ, we will keep up to date as the process goes, but as you see, we already have drafted in. Uh the public survey, uh we would, we would hope that we will get something out. Uh by the end of the month or at least early August. The open house, we are planning to have that early September uh in combination with the open house on the. Uh healthcare uh stuff that is happening, so we're gonna combine those two open houses into one uh early September. Uh and then we will complete the uh what we heard document and. We would then eat like to have the draft bylaws in front of committee. Uh either at the last meeting in September or the fir- the first uh committee or the whole meeting in October.
Okay, thank you. For implementation, when?
Uh through the chair, when it the 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 process would just keep moving along until it's actually done, so. If we get in front of uh committee of the whole uh. At the first meeting in October, uh providing you don't have any major rewrites and you're happy with where the process. Then it would just flow to the next council meeting, you'd do first reading. And then it would flow to the next council meeting after that to do uh public hearing and second and third readings. Uh so. Your uh.
My question was, when would the fees increase if everything went smoothly?
Probably November.
November this year?
Yeah, November, November or December this year.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Would would this discussion be part of our budget box?
Uh through the Chair of Committee, I I can't see us not discussing this through the budget, but hopefully we. We don't get bogged down on the issue and and take up the time that is, you know, directly proportioned to budget.
So here's my questions. Do you have a rough estimate as how much? These meters would cost for us to meter the whole town and where are we getting that money from?
Uh through the Chair of Committee, so the cost I've shown at that just under ten dollars a month. That's all we would have to come up with because the company will charge us per month over twenty years for the life of the meters. Um so we wouldn't have to come up with that money. However, uh council does have to be aware. That we still have to show that as part of our borrowing debt. Um would even being offered a service, we've checked with our auditors, that is considered a debt. Uh so if we go that route where we pay a a monthly fee, it does eat up some of our ability to borrow.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Well, I only have one um before we leave the water meter topic. Since um water meters changed the fees. As you, uh my original question was, and we already voted on the fees. We have to redo on the change of the fees again, cuz there was differences in the fees, right? Based on whether it was a hundred percent metered or not metered. So we go to the original piece or do we have to?
So I'm gonna come back to this again. Anyways, they're gonna go to consultation, so I don't think there's any need to revisit any of that. Get in touch.
I I uh through uh through the Chair of all committee, I think you've provided exactly what we were looking for tonight. It provides us with what coun- council is thinking in this current snapshot in time. Uh it allows us to go away, start public communication, it allows us to start drafting the bylaws. Um we know that we need to include a a meter fee or we need to in. Or we need to capture it somewhere in the cost because it is a cost. Um so we will build that in based on your. Uh on your direction for water meters and we'll get input from the public. And when it comes back to you, the next time you'll know what the public thinks as as well and you can finalize your decisions.
Thank you very much. Section uh no more comments, questions? Four four, green municipal fund, uh adaptation in action. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, to the rest of committee. So I'll be presenting this one, the. X through S E M, the Green Municipal Fund has launched a new program, the Adaptation in Action. This pro- this program will fund up to sixty percent of eligible costs. Uh at the total cost equaling one million, there's also some stackable opportunities of ten percent for. Municipalities that are rural and remote, which we would be. Uh which we would comply with, so we could get possibly another ten percent and uh. Really depending on the census that we use, we will try to get another ten percent for eighty percent, but we or we're not entirely. Uh sure that we'll be able to limbo under the oculation threshold to get that extra ten percent. So we are saying that at a maximum, we could possibly get seven hundred thousand dollars through this. Through this grant. So we're we're here to provide some information and get council direction on which project that we want to move forward with. For this grant, we've we've come up with two concepts and. Would fit the parameter, specific parameters of this grant. Project number one is the backup generators for key utility infrastructure, so this is the. Uh the backup generators for the upstream infrastructure that we have agreed to through the MANDI agreements. That includes a backup generator for the uh the clarifier, the s- uh the stave line. Uh the filter plant ons and river pump house. So the estimated total cost of those three generators. Is one point nine million. What we would have to do as a part of this to. Be compliant with that one million dollar threshold is we would likely. Find one generator that would be in and around one million dollars and make the application for that. And we also need the project to stand uh on its merits for all of the different eligibility criteria. Through the Green Municipal Fund like um you know, adapting to climate change. So we we'd like to pick an asset that, you know, is suited towards adapting to climate change as the uh. It as part of the rationale for going forward with this project. So this project uh we could obtain, we're saying a maximum additional contribution of seven hundred. We will likely try for eight, but we are saying seven hundred at a maximum is what we expect if we are were successful. With our full application at this point. That would mean roughly three hundred dollars, which is already committed through contract and will be included in the budget. Would come from the town of Hinton. Uh that project is already funded in part by PAMWIP and a grant that we received for about. For about four point nine nine million. Um but we are eligible to, both granting bodies are. Are okay with stacking federal and provincial funding to to fund this project. The the second project is a is a novel concept, but one that uh we've been discussing is is administration. Uh and we thought that it was viable to to bring to the floor. Um at this point in time where we. Is administration, we won't be recommending it for a few different reasons, but uh the project is that. The we would apply for this funding source and we would create a fire break. Uh close to Mary Reimer Park. We have identified that as a one of the. Most at risk uh areas within town. Uh you know, for the most part, the town in it actually is very well protected. When it comes to fire breaks around town, we we are fairly well protected from the south. Uh we are fairly well protected from the east to the north. Of course, we have to add the Baskin River. This is one of the last remaining pieces of fire break work that we thought was valuable to complete. Um and we were looking at this as a partnership with the newly formed River Valley Agricultural Society. To take ownership of that fire break, manage it as a grazing lease or a pasture upon the project completion. That would provide that agricultural society likely with some revenue. Uh potential to uh to charge for boarding fees. And it would also be available in the event of an emergency evacuation. This is a timely discussion. Uh. I I got word today that there is approximately seventy two horses from the Jasper area that are now in Mary Reimer Park in those. Stables, so it is very full right now. Uh and and they do have a. An event this weekend, so I'm not sure how they're gonna manage that, but uh. You know, we wish them all the best, but you know, but that is the concept that if there was an evacuation, we we went through the same process last year where. Within Mary Reimer Park in those uh within that fencing, we had horses and llamas and. I think an alpaca and chickens running around, so it was a. It you know, it wasn't very conducive and that was a challenge for us in last year's fire season is. How do we, how do we balance all of these different animals? Because livestock and protecting them in the event of an emergency is a. Real concern. Um. This year with the evacuation of Jasper, typically it's all horses, so I don't believe that we ran into that same problem. Uh we have requested that the River Valley Agricultural Society confirm a few things, one that they would be willing to. Manage this in perpetuity and then that that provides us the benefit of not having to maintain this every five years and go in and. Clear, re-clear it. Uh the the animals will take care of that for us. And the other is that we, well, we have, we have encouraged them to apply for a supplemental grant through. UFA agricultural communities to provide some whatever may be needed in the interior like uh. Likely some additional fencing, possibly some shelters and uh watering systems and things of that nature. The the project that we're providing here at a uh a high level estimate of three hundred thousand would include the clearing. Clearing of that land and we have included a conceptual map on page twenty one. It uh it moved slightly with transferring it into the system, but it's still uh close. Uh the clearing and perimeter fencing, there is labor included in this uh. In this estimate, if this is regulatory, uh there is a lot of regulatory hurdles that we would have to jump through with this project. Working with the province and uh and there is. Aside from the fencing, but we've also included some money to, once the clearing is done, to seed it likely. Some variety of hay that is uh endorsed by the agricultural society that would be conducive for their animals. So. We are at this point in time, are recommending that we move forward with the backup generator for key utility infrastructure project. Um partly because. That is already budgeted. When you look at the dollars that are involved, this one we believe is significant. The uh the fire break partnership, we we see it valuable and symbiotic for everybody involved. But we think that this could possibly come from either a separate intake or from possibly another grant. We we did talk to the province and. Were trying to inquire if there was any major concerns about transferring this to an agricultural lease. They have notified us that they uh they would not be providing any answers or any high level analysis on that. Until we went through a specific process and made a specific application for them to look into that, so. You know, these things do take some time. That time and not having those answers, I think incorporates a lot of risk into the project, so. Uh at this point in time, I don't think that this is the right time for the project, but we did include included it here for council's consideration.
Um yeah, I'm gonna make number one recommended option and the committee provides consensus to apply for the Green Municipal Fund. Uh adaptation in action for the backup generator for key utility infrastructure project. Um and adding a, this project's recommended currently budgeted and nearly shovel ready. Um and if I can quickly speak to it, I think this one, based on the dollar figure. Um this is a a reasonable uh you know, what they asked for this particular grant. I think for all the reasons are, you know, similar to what uh Seer and Nace are discussing is. I think the second project, there are a lot of other grants, options that are available both to us as a town. Uh for being fire smarting, but also to the agricultural society as well. Uh I think there's a, there's a lot of work that can be done there. Um it could be even discussed internally uh in our budgets, you know, fire smarting is important for our community and identify that area. It's a small or smaller amount of dollar figure, but maybe we could discuss, you know, uh to try and make that project happen. Versus a one point nine million dollar one. So that's the reason I'm gonna go with the recommended action for with number one. Um and then, but to not, hopefully, and this is not to squash that second project. I think that second project still has a lot of value to the community for safety and also for for the agricultural society as well. So, thank you.
My uh. Oh, I'll go ahead, Christian.
See, I I I agree with with Counselor Haas. I think option one is kind of a no brainer. I think it's an important thing to move ahead with. Um I really like. Option two, though, I I think that there's a lot of value in that. We're, like you say, we're living it now. We lived it last year. Um this doesn't seem to be going away anytime soon, these concerns and issues. So I guess my question to administration is, do we know that there will be a later intake of uh the GMF? Funding. Like, is this something that gets released on a regular basis or is this kind of a, we're hoping that they will be. Putting out another intake, but we're not sure. And then I guess the secondary part of my question would be. Putting out another intake, but we're not sure, and then I guess the secondary part of my question would be, do we know that? There's fire smart initiatives out there that would fund this. Um, and, and would, would something like this typically fit, cause I have no idea.
Through the chair to the rest of the committee, there are. The, the timelines that the, the, the granting body, the G M F granting body has provided me is that they expect. This to occur into twenty-eight, twenty-nine, now there's no guarantees of that, and there's also a federal election between. Now and twenty-eight, twenty-nine, so. I would, I would take that with a grain of salt, um, the twenty-eight, twenty-nine timeline. However, we do know and what is funded is that there is another intake in November. Uh, you know, we are working on some possibilities as administration and there's some other ideas out there that. Could also include some much larger dollar amounts, so, you know. The smaller ones typically may. Get pushed to the side a little bit when you have very large projects, uh, on the books shovel ready. Um, that you could possibly pursue, but, you know, I do see this one as. One that would, uh. That would suit free up or fire smart applications fairly well, and I think that this is a u- unique comment or, uh, project. And it, it ties in a lot of different things, not only does it protect the community, but it provides proactive planning when it comes to livestock. Um, you know, it, it, so it certainly helps out the agricultural community surrounding hint and. Uh, there's a lot of good things going for this project that I think we could be successful in, uh, a fire smart or a free application that. Uh, that typically commonly is smaller dollars, uh, that we could fit this within, so. You know, and, and in the meantime, I think that if we were interested in pursuing this at some later date, depending on a grant application. That we would make the, uh. Make an application to the province likely at the first step as to see what's on this land and whether there's some pre-existing conditions. That would prevent us from doing this, because they wouldn't provide us that answer. Yeah, a, a high level discussion with Yellowhead County, they were supportive of this type of initiative, but, uh. Uh, working through the province and obtaining that lease is the, the big risk in this.
If I may follow up. Um, just, is there, is this one of those ones where you have an opportunity to? Do like a seed funding or exploratory funding or feasibility study, like, is there anything like that? That's linked with this type of funding that, that we'd be able to see if there's a way that we could move ahead. You know, get some funding to help us continue to plan this, so maybe we would be in a better position for a November intake. I just, I think it's a unique project and if there's money out there, we can catch or at least see. You know, if, if there is some, some of that feasibility or whatever, is that there, and then I guess my next part is. If we just follow the recommended action one and don't make a secondary motion. Do we need to make a secondary motion to continue to have the conversations happen between you guys and the agricultural society? Things like that.
Through the chair to members of committee. Yes, my recommendation is if, you know, if we do go at the motion that's currently on the floor. And if we, if committee is, does wanna see administration to continue to pursue this. Uh, to make a motion, I'll take a look at the wording, but it would be to pursue a. There's a specific term on the form that we need, but it would be to pursue that, um. Pursue that application for the province to explore the lands that we've, uh, conceptualized. And to see whether there's some pre-existing restrictions on it, uh, I, I believe I put it somewhere in my report, but I. I don't see it on first glance, uh, that would likely be the next step, I, I don't think that we would require any dollars at this point. I think that administratively, we would just take that on, we would make an application and we would take it one step at a time. If we did want to amend our fire smart plans in order to incorporate something like this and a fire break on this. End of town, I think that would likely be the, some of the work and the, some of the work that would be valuable. If we do ultimately go and pursue a grant, because we do have it incorporated already into our fire smart plans.
Okay, uh, talking about the backup generator, which is the motion on the floor. Um, my question is, are there any, um, special conditions with this green fund money that we should be aware of? You said, uh, the application has to be adapted to climate change. What are the implications of that for the town? Backup generator has to be, uh, you know, fueled by electricity, you know, one, going under solar or. Something like that, or is there, is there some implications that we should be aware of? So, that statement that you said adapted to climate change, that's, I'd like to know what that really means.
Uh, through the chair and members of council, that, that's more of. What I'll call the fancy footwork that we as administration have to do when we're making that grant application. The project itself stand on, stands on its own two feet and it's a, it's a backup generator. How we sell it to the specific grant based on their specific conditions, there's always some massaging that you do on whatever project to, uh. You know, just pitch it in a way that this is a, is a portion of it is. It's addressing the risk of climate change because there are more fires in this region than there were historically. Um, that could cut out the power like we saw last year, and so backup generators are needed for that purpose. It's not changing the project in any way, what the project is, it'll always be, it's just more of the. The massaging that you have to do to be successful when you're making grant applications.
Correct, it's not gonna be someone who's coming, that's gonna follow us for decades, okay, great. Uh, any more comments or questions on the motion? But we see the motion up on the board, just so we cover to make sure it's fully, uh, announced. The committee provides consensus to apply Green Municipal Fund, uh, Adaptation in Action for a backup generator for. A key utility infrastructure project, is that, uh? Okay, thanks, any, uh, more comments or questions? Okay, with that, could we vote for or against, please? That passes unanimously. Are there any more, um, comments or questions on the rest of the slide, you have a comment on the, you know, prior break proposal. Where does this sit with our, do we have a complete, uh, community assessment for wildfire threat analysis? And where does this project then sit on that analysis? To show that this expenditure money is well spent and it's one of our high priorities. And in order to show that, we'd have to have a complete wildfire analysis, do we have that?
Through the chair to members of council, no, we do not have a. Fire analysis, which would typically be hiring a consultant to come in and do an assessment of all the different areas. What we do have is our fire smart plans, uh, that's more, that's a little bit more grassroots and identifying the locations that. You know, typically our emergency services personnel see as the large risks within the community. This has been one that has been identified, uh, by our. By our, uh, fire service personnel as one of the last remaining areas and one of the, uh, one of the at-risk. Just due to, you know, we, we are well protected on pretty much all sides except for this one, so. You know, it was a, it was something that was identified. Uh, locally, but no, I wouldn't say that there was a sophisticated analysis of fire behavior and what we have and. In, in recent years or, or that I'm aware of.
Go ahead, I have another question, but go ahead, Christian.
Um, I'd like to make a motion and I might need your help, C O Panasik, that, uh. Council reached consensus to, that we would direct administration to continue. Working with the province on, what do we wanna call it, the land, land disposition? Application for land disposition, is that? Reasonable C O, or if you wanna help me out with the wording, I think we know what I'm trying to get at.
Through the chair, yeah, I think that works.
Yeah, just, just so that there's something in writing that kind of, that, you know, provides the opportunity for. The province or for you guys to start working with the province to see if this is even feasible, um, from their standpoint, so that, you know, we could be poised to. Put in applications, whether that's for fire smart or for, um, a November intake for the, the G M F. So. I can't see the board, so you'll have to read it to me.
Both, the committee provides consensus to continue working with the province for land disposition for fire break partnership. And for the town's contribution for up to a hundred forty thousand to come forward to the two thousand twenty-five budget process. So, what you intend?
No. No, could it, was that just the, the second?
That's what I see on the board.
Yeah, correct, I, one moment, Counselor Chambers, I'm gonna send it to you.
Good.
Um, I'll send it out with the voting and then you can read it. I just added the last whole section about the fire breaks, so if you guys want to massage that, feel that.
Jen, I believe after fire break partnership. And then the rest is, yeah, you can take over it, I believe, yeah.
That's correct, yeah, nothing about the money coming back, cause at, at this point, I think we just need to know that it's feasible. And once we have that information. Yeah, that would be my. Motion I'd like to make, unless somebody wants to amend it, but that would be my motion.
Hello, Kerber, just for the public, say, do we wanna name the area in which we're the fire and break partnership is, just to confirm? That's the area that we're looking at, I know it's in this, but, um, or is that necessary?
Fire break partnership, uh, for the lands adjacent to Mary Reimer Park.
Yeah.
Possibly, uh, is it to make it standalone?
Yeah, if, if I may, cause then at least the public knows what area that we are, and they don't have to. Register trying to find out what fire break address.
I'm happy to have that in there, so I do agree with that clarity.
What? My question would be maybe Kristen or, or the C O. Are we certain it's gonna be a land disposition, cause if we turn it over to a grazing lease and we give grazing lease authority and they have say as to what happens. On a land that's a critical fire break for us, is that what we really intend?
Through the chair to members of council, I, I mean, there, there's a whole variety of different models that you can do in a disposition. One is that you can actually take ownership of it, uh. One is that you would look at a lease, one is that you'd look at a license to use, I mean, there's a lot of, uh. There is a lot of models, we'd have to decide which one is best, uh, there are other. Layers of regulation that we would have to wait through, one being our, our intermunicipal development plan that. Yellowhead County, that area is, uh, deemed for future residential development or. I believe it's termed future neighborhood development of some kind, so we would have to decide on whether we want to maintain that vision. Uh, and look at a lease or license to use, that could be disposable if we ever did decide. To move ahead with the development of that area, or if we wanted to take ownership and, uh. Possibly zone it as agriculture and have that there as a permanent fixture, I mean, you could go both ways. Um, you know, what we were looking at and what we had envisioned was that this wouldn't be something that would be. Uh, permanent fixture, but that's, that's a lot of land and that's a long ways out, and we thought that for the foreseeable future. That, that, that lease and, uh, that fire break would be able to be maintained as more of a community pasture. So, so a lot of those questions, we, we could answer later on in the process as we work through it, but I think it's a good question that we'll need to answer.
Sure. Um, my other question is, this little area, it's its concept area, is that the area you intend for grazing?
Through the chair, more or less, it, it did get moved to a, a tiny bit. Over, but that's the general idea, yeah.
Does that area actually be run by a fire smart expert, because. I ran it by a fire smart expert, he said that's totally ineffective, it would have to go all the way to Highway sixteen to be an effective fire break. So is that just sort of a tentative area and that we'll run it by an actual fire smart expert?
It's very much tentative, uh, likely what we would be doing is that we, we probably would bring it all the way to the highway, not. All the way to the highway because we don't wanna provide access to a pasture from the highway, uh. But we would likely look at a, a smaller area, but this was the area just in concept that we were. Looking at for a pasture area, we likely will continue it a little bit further towards the highway, um, but I don't know if. That area will be considered as pasture.
Okay, uh, one more question. Maybe it's just the wording of this, this leased area would be available for evacuated livestock in the event of an emergency. That's not an emergency in our town, that's an emergency someplace else.
That's correct.
Cause if we have an emergency here, we're surely gonna evacuate the livestock out of our town, not keep it in a area where it's gonna get barbecued.
That's, that's correct, yeah, the, uh, the intent is that this would serve the surrounding regions, that if there is any evac. Any evacuations in the surrounding region that they would be able to bring here and, uh, house their live, livestock in this area.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Great, with that, we'll vote on that the committee provides consensus to continue working with the province for land disposition for fire break partnership. For the lands adjacent to Mary Reimer Park, please vote for or against, thank you. That's unanimous, now we'll move on to the brief annual, oh, any more questions or comments? Now we'll move on to the panelists, thank you, changing options.
So, Mr. Chair, may I call for a moment, we just need to arrange something.
Okay, let's have a settlement break.